Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August edition of the Johnson County Planning Board. As is our custom, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask for this forward to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of procedural elements for us before we get to approval of the minutes. We have one addition to the agenda that was not included on the published version. That is number five, consideration of a draft of the new comprehensive transportation plan. That will come on the agenda after the subdivisions, but we do need a motion and a vote to add that to the agenda, please.
Motion. Second?
Motion by Ms. Howard to add the CTP to the agenda and a second by Ms. Holmes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The next thing is that rezoning case 2505 is asked to be tabled until the September 16th meeting, so I'll need a motion and a second to table that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Holmes to table case 2505 to the September 16th meeting. A second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so if you're here for rezoning case 2505, that will not be heard this evening. It will be heard at our September 16th meeting. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 15th Planning Board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And so, one more thing before we get to subdivisions for anyone that's here this evening or maybe watching from home or wherever else on our live stream. We do have unfortunately due to the loss of Mr. Hudson and open on the planning board, so if you have any interest in serving on this board, you can just go into Google and search Johnson County Planning Board and you can find where to apply for the board. Those applications are due by next Monday, so if you've watched these meetings, participated in these meetings, been to these meetings and have any interest in serving the county in the capacity of being a board member, we would encourage you to go online and apply. Next on our agenda are subdivisions. I'll remind everyone that the vast majority of land in Johnson County is on agricultural residential, which means you can farm it or build houses on it by right. As such, it's not the purview of this board to determine if a subdivision is appropriate for any given location or proposed location, only that it meets the county's codes and ordinances. So if you're going to give testimony relative to a subdivision, I'd ask you to keep your testimony relevant to those codes and ordinances. If you are going to speak as it relates to a subdivision, given that we are the final approval authority, we will need you to be sworn in. So if you're going to speak relative to a subdivision, will you please stand and raise your right hand? For or against, or if you just have any questions? Okay. Looks like most everybody here. Good deal. Do you affirm the information you're about to provide, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marr?
Yes, first up on the agenda is Broadwell Tract. Owner and developer Koi and Carolyn Broadwell. Surveyor engineer is 4D Site Solutions. It's on NC Highway 210 at the northeast corner of the intersection with Old Stage Road in the Pleasant Grove Township. It's served by the 5210 Fire District and Rescue Squad. It's 10.68 acres, two lots proposed, individual septic. Johnston County water. Traffic counts 10,000 vehicles per day in 2023 was the last count published. This portion of NC Highway 210 appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as an existing boulevard needing improvement. In regards to driveway access on NC Highway 210, major subdivisions to be located on local roads shall be so designed that there shall be no more than one direct residential driveway connection per 500 feet along the same side of the local road unless it can be demonstrated that the proposed subdivision cannot be physically designed, that no reasonable alternative exists or will create an unreasonable hardship without a corresponding public benefit to prohibit individual driveway access onto the local road. Also, from the Johnson County Land Design Manual, development's creating four or more lots where no easement exists and where the parent tracts have direct road frontage and easement shall not be allowed. The development must dedicate a right-of-way meeting the requirements of this section. A waiver may be allowed if determined by the planning board that in pursuit of this section a hardship is created upon the property that provides no benefit to the safety, welfare and quality of life to the public. This is two lots, but it has been subdivided within the last five years, which makes it a major subdivision.
Any questions of Mr. Marr?
Thank you, sir.
Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Broadwell Tract? If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Scott Brown, 409 Chicago Drive, Suite 112, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Here on behalf of the applicant, we are, as Mr. Marr mentioned a few minutes ago, 4D Site Solutions. We're surveyors for the property. We are asking for, Mr. Broadwell wants to cut an additional lot out of the overall tract on the corner, being 8.68 acres or remaining larger tract. As Mr. Marr mentioned, lots one and two, the adjoining lots were subdivided earlier with a minor subdivision plat. Mr. Broadwell wanted to get a total of three lots out of that corner. There's an existing 50-foot ingress/egress easement to the church cemetery that butts up to this new lot one, so the only way we could get that additional lot was through the major subdivision plat, and that's why we're here tonight, asking for that y'all approve this preliminary plat for allowing Mr. Broadwell to move forward with that additional third lot as shown.
So the access to the new lot one, will that be directly?
It'd be directly to 210 provided the workout access with DOT, with driveway permit.
Okay. And then so, lot two would be accessed through the existing driveway location that serves the cemetery?
Yes, sir. Lot two is, I think it's being farmed or something right now. I'm not sure. To be honest with you, I'm looking at aerial photograph exactly where the existing access is for lot two.
Questions, gentlemen?
We would, like I said, we would be asking for access off of 210 provided we get DOT to approve it.
All right. If you have any questions, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to the Broadwell Tract? All right. Bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendation was denied based on the direct driveway access on the NC Highway 210 and lack of required driveway separation. However, NC DOT had no comments or concerns.
I should have asked this earlier, but the only new driveway going in is on lot one, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, from the new lot one, yes.
He said NC DOT had no comments or no concerns.
No comments or concerns. Their driveway separation is less than the county's requirement. Yours is usually 100 feet.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Broadwell Tract is approved. Greenview subdivision.
Yes, sir. Greenview subdivision. Owner is Angel Roberto Rodriguez Garcia. Developer is RDZ Utilities. Surveyor engineer is Godwin Engineering, Joe Godwin, Jr. Location, that is NC Highway 210 west of Lassiter Pond Road in the Elevation Township, served by Wilson Smills Fire and Rescue. It's 32.32 acres, 29 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water Individual Septic. Traffic count in 2023 was 4,900 vehicles per day on this road. This portion of NC Highway 210 appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as an existing boulevard needing improvement. Per NC DOT, road improvements will be required.
Any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Greenview subdivision?
Good evening. I'm Justin Lee with Godwin Engineering, 1403 NC Highway 50 South, Minton, North Carolina. 29 lots, a single DOT ditch section street. There is wetlands. We have worked with a soil scientist. He's got those flagged for us. We've shown them on the map. We've not delineated at this stage, but we will. No floodplains. There are two buffered, three buffered features, I apologize. A pond, the drain from the pond, and then the sassafrum branch at the back. We're not proposing anything in the buffers. And then there's an existing tract of land surrounded by the parent tract that was previously subdivided. We plan to give them direct access from the street and a mailbox so they don't have to go to 210 for their mailbox anymore. And we're working with the Postal Service on the cluster box location.
Is it planned to be a homeowners association?
I think so, yes, sir.
Did you give any thought to having that pond be deeded to the homeowners association rather than individual?
At this stage, we were planning on doing a private magnet easement with the lot owners who connect to the pond, but if there is, with the homeowners association, we could consider deeding the pond to the HOA. That might actually be the best idea.
Yeah, I don't know that it's necessarily, I mean, it's not in the codes and ordinances, but it's something we've faced before and as it relates to pond maintenance and liability and all of that.
To eliminate issues and everything.
Yeah, you might want to think through that between now and your final plat. Any questions, gentlemen?
I have a question. My information says 29 lots, but am I looking at this wrong and the map shows 30? Yeah, it's showing 30. Is it 29 or 30?
It's 29. I don't really know why it's showing 30.
I'm counting backwards to see if there's one missing. It's showing 30.
No, I think you're right. The two lots, just two. 19 and 20. We've actually recombined those because of soils. We can't get adequate, so I don't know why this map is not reflecting that.
Okay.
Which two?
19 and 20.
Okay. Other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Greenview subdivision? Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
Okay, we're at 59 Muscaton Way, Smithfield.
And what's your name, ma'am?
Jenny McClary.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Earl McClary.
Okay.
We just had some concerns that we've lived there for five, almost five years in that Heritage Ridge subdivision, and we just had a few concerns that we wanted to address. All right, so we have T-Mobile phone service and we have spectrum internet, and after going through a lot of different things, we found out we only have one tower that's serving that, so it, we have dropped calls and at times we can't even call out even to 911. And we can't even call each other.
In the house.
In the house.
Okay.
And so, at times we lose internet service, and so they have really no plans to build another tower. We found out from this time, so.
And that's a shared tower. It's got Verizon, I think it's a primary T-Mobile, which we have, has one particular thing.
Okay.
We were told when we signed up, oh, great coverage there, told us we had internet. Here, take this home. This much a month. And I said, well, I'm not going to pay for it until I try it. And they said, oh, yeah, that's fine. Look here on our map, you've got good coverage. Got home, hooked it up. No coverage. And now, since that, they don't advertise that that internet's available.
Available on that area.
What, before? Yeah, it's great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, and the second thing is we have, there's a lot of traffic on that road, but the main concern is speed. And people are speeding on 210 all the time, and so we have to call the sheriff's department often. And we've seen accidents happen, a lot of accidents because of speed.
Yeah, one of the accidents, the guy actually turned. He came over the hill so fast that the car turning out of our subdivision, the car flipped the tail end of it, flipped the car over, hit a tree on the other side of the road. If somebody had been coming, it'd been a head-on. But the tree kind of stopped him, but yet he flipped over and the car ended up on its top, and the guy was all miked up. I don't know how he is, but, okay. The other thing I wanted, wanted to bring up was, I don't know why, there are no sidewalks in subdivisions in this county. I mean, there might be a few, but I served on the planning and zoning board in another county in North Carolina, and it was growing just like this. We moved into a town of about 8,000 people. That town's got over 70,000 people in it now, and that's what we see happening around here. I was on planning and zoning, and we passed a rule that any subdivision, the developer had to put in sidewalks. And people were like, oh, no, they won't build. Guess what? They'll build and they'll put in the sidewalks. You just have to approve it. If y'all require it, they will do it. The same thing with sign ordinances. You know, some of them had these real tall signs and all, and I know that's not the case here in Smithfield. I've noticed the signs are down, but in the subdivisions, you can ride around and you don't see sidewalks hardly ever. And on our street, was there 30 homes, about 30 homes? And kids walking up and down, cars coming by. You see people walk on Highway 210, no sidewalks, and I can understand the point on that, but in a subdivision, if you require it, the developer will put them in. It's that simple. I guarantee you, we never had, we had a couple balk at it at first, but once they knew it was required, never even came up. They put them in, and the people in the subdivision loved it. Just leave it at that. I think this one, it's coming in off to have sidewalks.
Well, we'll tell you that the county is currently going through a process of rewriting the Unified Development Ordinance, which deals particularly with elements just like that. I'd encourage you to participate in that process if you haven't already.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Greenview subdivision? Okay. Bring it back to staff. Question for you, Mr. Marr. I believe you mentioned this. I want to make sure that I heard clearly that NC DOT does plan to require improvements along NC 210?
They do. They did not share what they were, but there will be improvements.
I would assume, given that the adjacent subdivision, that the individuals that just spoke live in includes a left and a right turn lane, it would probably be something similar. Thanks, sir.
Staff recommendation is preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
I have a question for you, Todd. Since the site plan that was presented tonight shows 30 lots, is there anything that we need to do or because it's an inaccurate site plan?
So what I would suggest there is the representative for the applicant made a statement that 19 and 20 were to be combined. That'd be, that would be noted in your motion, so it would be a net total of 29 lots with the, at final plating, that 19 and 20 were, would be combined, but not to exceed 29 lots as per the application.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, I make a motion to approve with the condition that 19 and 20 are combined lots and the subdivision does not exceed 29 lots total.
Second. Motion approved with conditions by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Greenview subdivision is approved. Glendale Road Tract.
Yes, sir. Owner is Ray Boyett Trust. Developer is AVS Investments and Little River Joko Properties LLC. Surveyor engineer is Becker Morgan Group. Its location is Glendale Road southeast of Bay Valley Road in the Beulah Township, served by Shu Hill Fire, North Johnston Rescue Squad. It's 42.64 acres, 34 lots proposed, Johnston County Water Individual Septic. Traffic count's not available for Glendale Road. This portion of Glendale Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This parcel is not within the environmentally sensitive area. However, a floodplain appears on the parcel. A reverse frontage buffer is required for all lots that back up to Glendale Road.
Any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Glendale Road Tract?
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams. I'm a professional engineer with Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street in Clayton, and our firm is handling the planning and engineering on this project. As you can see, we're proposing 34 single-family detached lots. We've designed our subdivision to meet the county's ordinance. We have provided the cluster box, the cluster mailbox location with inside. It's in the second cul-de-sac. Closest on Street C is what it's labeled. We do call out on our plans that we will be providing a reverse frontage buffer, as Todd noted a second ago. And should we get approved tonight, then we will be working, moving forward to work with NC DOT, Johnson County Public Utilities for our associated construction permits. So with Adam, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sounds like a good, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to the Glendale Road Tract? All right. Bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations, preliminary approval subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, I believe I heard, a second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Glendale Road Tract is approved. Next on our list is Shade Tree Road Tract.
Owner is Shade Tree Road Tract. Owner is Helen D. Woodall Living Trust. Developer is Lipscomb Development. Surveyor engineer is Becker Morgan Group. Location is Shade Tree Road just east of Sycamore Court in the Elevation Township, served by Elevation Fire District and EVS Rescue Squad. It's 51.5 acres, 38 lots proposed, Johnston County Public Water Private Septic. Traffic count's not available. This portion of Shade Tree Road does not appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. This parcel is not within the environmentally sensitive area. However, a floodplain appears on a portion of the parcel.
Any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Shade Tree Road Tract?
Hello, board. Amanda Graham, Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street, Clayton, North Carolina. As Mr. Marr summed up very well, we have 38 single-family lots served by one cul-de-sac street, and we have the mailbox unit located close to the end of the cul-de-sac, and there will be some parking spaces associated with that. So if this is approved tonight, then we will move forward with the design and acquiring all necessary permits with NC DOT, following all the Johnston County Stormwater and Road Control. I also have had some communication with some of the adjacent property owners already. I know there, many are here tonight to kind of talk about some of the stormwater concerns that they have. So in addition to any of the questions that you guys may have, I'm more than happy to come back up and kind of address some of those as they come up.
Talk to me about lot 38.
Okay. So lot 38 is, we're following the, there's an old access point, like a farm, that is a farm access, so we plan to use that as the drive to access that area.
So that, I assume that access off, access is on to Shade Tree Road? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's an existing driveway.
So it'll be just one large but residential lot?
Mm-hmm. Due to the environmental constraints, we're not going to split that one up any.
Other questions?
What's, I'm sorry, 31 S is a septic repair area for lot 31.
Those are off-site septic, yeah. In your packet on sheet 202, it kind of shows the septic breakdown of things. So the red areas are good septic soils. In our preliminary evaluations, you know, the septic, they're subject to change, but the lots that have S's after them are going to be utilized as off-site septic areas.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Shade Tree Road Tract? Yes, ma'am. Give us your name and address, please.
Kathy Jones, 773 Shade Tree Road. If you can pull up the map, you see that, there's a little triangular section there. It's by lots nine and 10. That's the property that I have that's adjacent. In addition to that, my property goes further to the other side and all the way up to Shade Tree, so I also have road frontage property in addition to that piece in the backside.
Okay.
My concerns with the subdivision are the fact that that back corner is a very low-lying area. It stays wet all year, pretty much, and the property line between the two is right in the very middle of that drainage area. So, one, I'd like to talk to the developer or owner, see if they would be willing to split off, because that property line comes back at an angle. If they'd be willing to split that off so that I would have full control or maintenance of that drainage area, which could prevent someone from accidentally, I don't think the developer would, but an individual homeowner may not respect that low-lying area 10 years down the road, and I'm stuck with having to fight it somehow.
Sure.
So I would like to see that addressed, as well as lots nine and 10. If you go back to that map that shows the colors for the, for the septics.
Yes, ma'am. We have that.
Those lots nine and 10 are very odd shaped, and I think that's because there is a problem with septic in those areas, since they're not in the shaded areas, or they have a very small shaded area there. The road frontage piece, I know that Shade Tree Road is not on an improvement plan, but Shade Tree Road, when it was first built, when I first moved there, it was a dirt road. So I've got some history with, with the construction of that road. It, it is restricted for load control, so they can't have heavy loads on that road. And when it was constructed, it wasn't constructed for high traffic. And when it was constructed, it wasn't constructed for high traffic volume. So, I know they haven't measured how much traffic volume is there, because currently there's really only two other subdivisions on that road. So, you're not going to have a lot of traffic, but this is going to double the number of people living on that individual road. Plus, I'm not sure exactly where the road's going to come out, but it could be in an area that could have some limited sight as far as, there's a hill there, it's going downhill and uphill. We've had animals that have been hit in that general area. Those are my main concerns. And I spoke to her today, and I just wanted to make sure that my opinion was heard and put on the record.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm not a professional artist, but I'm going to give you a piece of paper that you can look at.
No problem. Thanks, sir.
I've already bought you a copy.
What passos, right?
We own the 54 acres, Ricky Green, 11 Nicole Drive, Ricky and Gwen Green, 11 Nicole Drive, Benson, 27504. We own the 54 acres that is on, it joins Kathy's land. If you go back to the map, you can see the map, we showed that little corner there.
Mm-hmm.
I own that, we own the land just adjacent to that corner. So, all the water, we have three concerns. All the water for the lots on the east side of this property, I guess they're going to run from the road, center of the road, back toward Kathy's land, the easement, and our land. All that water is going to come across my property. There is two agricultural fields, you can see on this thing, I noted them, and there's a pond. All that water that comes now, comes there and runs across that, across the property line, you know, and into that pond, which is a very shallow pond, because it was built, there was an old house there, the old house is still there. The pond was built just for irrigation, and it already overflows. So, I have that concern, that how are they going to handle the water on that side, on that little corner there? And then also, on the other side, which is the west side, that's going to go into that, you'll see the blue line, if you look on the map, you'll see where the water comes down from Shade Tree and turns and comes across, comes across my property. Our property is divided by the wetlands. There's 29 acres on one side of the wetlands, and there's 30-some acres on the backside of the wetlands. I have no access to the backside of this property, except this path, which has a, it's been there for 25 or 30 years, it has two five-foot culverts in it, and that, all that water comes through that, passes through that culvert. And I have hauled like 40 loads of dirt on this path to raise it, because it floods the path. And even the last two weeks ago, when we had the four-and-five-inch rain, the water came over that path. So, those culverts cannot handle that water. So, all the water is going to come off the west side of this property, is going to come into that wetlands, is going to cross through that culvert. And then all the east water is going to come off and come across the field and come into the wetlands on the other side of the culvert. So, you know, I have no problem with development, I understand that and so forth, but I just wanted to be addressed to say, I want to be sure that, you know, they don't raise the water level and they control this, and they don't put sediment in this wetlands, because all that does is raise the debt for the wetlands, you know? So, anybody have any questions for me, understand, you know, our concerns about how they're going to handle the water? You can see it on that, on that property, on that piece there, you can see the fields right to the right of Google, that's the two land, two fields that I control, and then there's the pond to the right of it, and right up in that corner where it's got air, that's where the water's going to come in by Kathy and come through the woods there.
Okay.
And come across those two areas, you know? And then, like I say, on the other side, you can see the creek, you can see the water to the left of the field, as you can develop up higher, you can see that little creek there, it's going to come down, it comes all the way down and then crosses my land on the backside, on the lower side.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely ask the applicant about stormwater and stormwater management, all that good stuff.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Shade Tree Road? Okay, Ms. Grimm, I think we want to hear a little bit about stormwater runoff and management as it relates to our ordinances in the subdivision.
Absolutely. If it's okay with you guys, I'd like to address Kathy's question first about the site distance at the entrance. That's just the easy one to get out of the way. We will be following all NC DOT requirements on this, which will include an onsite site distance to make sure that that isn't a concern with where the entrance is located. So, that will be taken care of in the design phase of everything. So, then moving on to the stormwater, as you all know, Johnston County has an extensive stormwater program with rules in place to protect these exact situations. So, as a developer, we try to mimic existing draining patterns on things, you're not sending a lot of water somewhere where it didn't go before, because that creates a lot of problems. So, should this be approved tonight, we will be moving forward using all of the Johnston County stormwater regulations that are in place to ensure that there are no negative downstream effects.
Trying to decide if I want to hear more about that.
Okay.
Define for me negative downstream effects, that the stormwater plan.
Wonderful.
We'll address.
So, perfect. So, to, I'm just going to kind of sum up some of the highlights of the Johnston County stormwater program. A subdivision like this is limited to 15% impervious increase. So, we have approximately 50 acres here, so that's going to determine how much impervious area would be like your road and your houses and stuff, to make sure that we're not increasing the volume of water that's leaving the site. And then the next level of that, we need to look at every point where water is leaving the site, and we need to make sure that it's not greater than a 10% increase than what it was prior to your construction being built. So, you can't dump a whole lot of water somewhere. And then, depending on what the reviewer does, and we do work closely with her as well, to make sure that I address some of these things preemptively, knowing that the adjacent landowners have some concerns. There may be some things that she requires where you study the stream banks to make sure that you don't ever overtop the stream banks that are there, or downstream pipes or things like that. And that would be at the discretion of the reviewer.
So, downstream pipes.
Would be what, yeah, that's.
And a stream that is not necessarily on this property would be something that the reviewer?
It very well could be, yes. It's hard to say at this point, because she, the reviewer is really who has the jurisdiction to kind of request that. But common things would be to have a surveyor go out and actually tell you exactly what a stream channel looks like, and then you have to do the calculations and show that your water is not going to overtop that stream bank and flood somebody. So, every project is a little bit different with what is required. But at this point, I know the Johnston County Stormwater reviewer and as well as the engineer of record, we are aware of the concern, so it is going to be something that is taken into consideration as we move forward.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ms. Grimm?
Can I ask a question?
Thanks. You can come up here if you don't mind. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
I have a question about.
Just speaking to the market.
She can help me with. The driveways and the water that comes through this subdivision from elevation down, it's all downhill, so it has to come. Does that water, do they, I mean, does that water go somewhere? I mean, it can't stay in the ditches and it has to come, I'm just asking this question. Reason I ask this question is, we, Cary Woods is on the other side of me. We're actually in Cary, let me back it, we in Cary Woods, but we bought the land behind Cary Woods, and all the water for Cary Woods comes down and comes into a ditch, and it runs down this property, my property, and runs into the creek. And that's my question there, I was just going to ask her, when you put the driveways in and they go to the cul-de-sac down there, is that water going to go from there in?
I think the point of the stormwater ordinance is to keep the water flowing as it flows now, and to limit the amount of increase and lim, not only increase in volume, but it limits the increase in intensity, so the volume over time. So, the stormwater management ordinance not only restricts, but addresses those two elements. And, you know, the specific improvements that are needed to address those two elements aren't something that is typically known at this stage of the design.
Yeah.
So, that's, maybe that'll help answer your question as it relates to my note.
Another thing, the gentleman before talked about a buffer. I guess they got a pond on that property, and they're talking about buffering that water. So, I'm assuming that will come under the stormwater too, of maybe buffering that water and turning it.
Well, so, wetlands have a required buffer around them by the Army Corps, and so that is an element that is in the requirement. And that basically limits what you can, you can't disturb within that buffer. So, you can't take trees out, you can't cut it, you basically leave it as it is. There is streams on this property that will have buffers that will, will come into play in this as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. All right, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval, subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Shade Tree Road tract is approved. Next on our list is Erpsborough 2A and 2B.
Erpsborough 2A and 2B, owner and developer Darlington Advisors LLC. Surveyor engineer is Becker Morgan Group. Its location is NC Highway 96 North, a quarter of a mile north of the intersection with the Erpsborough Road in the O'Neills Township. It is served by the Quaranters Fire District and the Clayton Rescue Squad. It's 242.52 acres, 139 lots proposed. Johnston County Public Water, Individual Septic. Traffic count's 950 vehicles per day, that was in 2023. This portion of Erpsborough Road appears on the comprehensive transportation plan as an existing minor thoroughfare with adequate design capacity. This parcel is not within the environmentally sensitive area, however, a floodplain appears on a small portion of the parcel. A reverse frontage buffer is required for all lots backing up to Erpsborough Road. A traffic impact analysis was created for this project, and the recommendations are in the conditions and requirements below. I also sent with the email earlier, the, a copy of the TIA, and there's one in front of Mr. Letchworth also, if you need it. The DOT recommendations are also right after the staff report. That's their review of the TIA.
I think you caught this when you were saying it, but just making sure I'm clear, this is located on Erpsborough, not NC 96.
It is. I'm sorry, yeah.
I heard you stumble there, and I figured you probably called it as you were saying, just for the record. Any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be heard on behalf of Erpsborough 2A and 2B?
Good evening again, Donnie Adams, Becker Morgan Group, 314 East Main Street in Clayton. We're again handling the engineering, planning and engineering on this project, and I think you may be looking at going, what in the world, why I've got so many different things I'm looking at? So, just a brief second on that. We initially submitted what we called 2A, which is the south side of Erpsborough Road, and as that was in the process, we were working on 2B, which is the north side, and realized our traffic count was over 100, or the number of lots were over 100 between the two, so we went ahead and went through the TIA process and made that submitted, and then planning said, hey, let's don't send them two different times to the planning board, we want to see everything. So, that's why you got two broken-up looking projects, they were initially separate. So, that being said, we've gone through the process of our typical planning process. We have it designed according to the county standards, NC DOT standards, as we mentioned about the TIA. The TIA was set up in coordination with Johnston County Planning, as well as the NC DOT for scoping to determine which intersections we're studying, where the traffic counts were done, and so all that was handled by the traffic consultant in concert with NC DOT and the planning department. And the TIA was submitted, reviewed, and approved by Johnston County Planning, NC DOT, and congestion management with NC DOT. The results are in front of you and have been mentioned, so just make that part of our record. And with that being said, our normal stuff, as I said before, I can point them out, but we do have cluster box units in each one of those threes, in those two subdivisions, but we got two entrances to the 2A side, the ones on the south, and if you're curious why we did that, we did it to prevent a stream and buffer crossing that rock here and buffer stream that runs between those two. But each one of those sections have their own cluster box unit, and then there's a cluster box units to the north on 2B. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Could you explain the reasoning behind Lots 40, 39, 38, 37?
I hope so. That would be on 2B?
It is.
Okay. Which, what'd you say? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I think it's 2A.
We didn't, now the numbers messed up because of that.
All right. Talking about lots. It's all lots. Donnie?
Yes.
Those right there.
Okay, okay, got you. I'm still struggling to put it on my hand. It's on the one to the north?
C 201.
Okay, all right, all right. I know we're looking now, sorry. Okay, okay, yeah, those, I do understand that question, it looks kind of weird and funky. The reason is the soils, the good soils are up against Erpsborough Road, so we have basically, we call that land hooks, where we make it part of the lot, and that's where the distribution line will go up to the septic fields.
Got it. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Apologize for me scrambling around trying to find it.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to be heard as it relates to Erpsborough 2A and 2B? All right, bring it back to staff.
Staff recommendations preliminary approval with the updated current location, which I'll correct location, which I'll fix tomorrow, subject to the conditions and requirements in the staff report.
Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Sasser, second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Erpsborough 2A and 2B is approved. I'm going to go ahead and handle the written decisions at this point before we move on to the presentation on the comprehensive transportation plan. So, I'll need a motion and a vote on each one of these. The first one we will consider is Jordan Ridge Phase 2.
I make a motion to approve the written decision.
Second. Motion by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we will do the estates at Marin Farm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Sasser, second by Ms. Holmes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Saddle Creek Farms.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Charles Massey Track.
Again, I make a motion to approve the written decision.
Anyone?
Second.
All right. Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It was a busy month last month.
Last one?
Last one, Little Pine Homestead.
Motion to approve the written decision.
Second.
Motion approved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I will need to recuse myself for the CTP portion of the presentation. Ms. Holmes is gonna take over for me, so I'll need a motion, a second and a vote.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Sasser. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.
Oh. I mean, do I just do the vote?
So, no. So what we're gonna do is, yeah, so the next item on your agenda is you'll see is this is a, a presentation of the county's comprehensive, new comprehensive transportation plan that McAdams Company has assisted county in developing this. Our former plan was roughly 11, 12 years old at this point and quite a bit has changed. The plan, that plan focused more on roadways, regional impact and the like. This is a little bit, this plan is a little bit different. It focuses, it doesn't overlook that, the regional, our regional fit in, in the road network or transportation network of North Carolina. Although we were, we did have a focus on moving people within Johnston County as well as looking at multimodal opportunities as well within Johnston County as we continue to grow. So at this time, I'd ask Mr. Joel Strickland with McAdams Company and he, we have a brief presentation for you. We will ask, at the conclusion of, of the presentation, we will need a recommendation from the planning board to go to the Board of Commissioners as this is going to the Board of Commissioners via public hearing on September 2. And at September 2 hearing, they have the option to adopt that evening or they can take it under advisement and delay that adoption to a later date. We would anticipate if they do that, it would be in the mid-month meeting of September. But at any rate, I'll turn it over to Joel at this time.
May I ask one question before Mr. Strickland takes over? I, I need to slip out about 10 past 7 and not, and I won't, I apologize. Do I need to ask for a recusal at that time? Just stop, Mr. Strickland?
If you just, if, if we, we can handle that now if the board's okay with that now.
I just need to slip out about 10 past 7, I have an appointment.
If we would still, I think we would still meet our, we would still be able to.
Yes, 'cause you got four. Yep.
Need a motion for that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
All right, planning board, thank you for letting me be with you tonight. I am Joel Strickland with McAdams. And Ms. Howard, it may not take me 20 minutes, so you may, you may be all right.
Maybe, all right.
But we're glad to be coming back to you and talking with you about the comprehensive transportation plan for Johnston County. As Mr. Newton said, obviously, this is a little bit different from your previous transportation plan that was done 12 or 13 years ago. But that said, we, we did still try to model it after NC DOT's comprehensive transportation plans. So when you review the plan, it'll look very similar to the, the format and the method that NC DOT still uses to do their comprehensive transportation plans as well. Looking at the vision for the plan, we worked with our steering committee and our working group to develop this vision along with feedback that we received from the public. And we drafted this vision connecting the residents of Johnston County through safe and efficient multimodal travel options to destinations within Johnston County and the region while enhancing economic vitality. Obviously, safety is a huge portion of this plan, really one of the biggest focuses of the plan, if not the biggest focus of the plan. So it was key to put that first in this vision. As Mr. Newton referred to, we also wanted this to be a true multimodal plan. So as you go through this, you'll see that we're, we're addressing all six of the major modes of transportation. So we wanted to address the multimodal components of transportation in the county. Again, we wanted this to really be a plan that would look at travel within the county, how to get from one end to the other efficiently, how to do it as, as safe and as quick as possible, and then kind of attack the region secondary to getting, moving around within the county. And all of that coming together, obviously, in game, we really want this plan also to play a large role in enhancing economic vitality in the county. So that was our vision that we kind of started out with, that kind of led the way for us drafting this plan and putting it all together. Some of the key statistics from the plan that you'll see, we did do three rounds of public meetings. They were held at various stages of the project. Basically had like one early meeting where we looked at existing conditions and kind of gave the public a chance to see what was already in place and also provide their, provide their input on needs. We did a second meeting kind of midway through the project to really start showing the public the draft recommendations and how we were progressing with the plan and again engage folks and get their feedback. And then lastly, we did a final public meeting, which we really had drafted and hashed out all of the recommendations within the plan and were close to having a draft plan ready. Throughout the process, we, we worked really hard with the county, with PIO Office. Adam did a great job helping us get the word out and we were able to engage with over 1,000 people throughout the process. And really, when we, when we did the survey and the rounds of public meetings, we actually had, if you incorporate all the survey numbers, we actually had over 3,100 views of the survey via the website and other public outreach means. So a lot of people were engaged, over 1,000 people participated either in the survey or in the public meetings. And we got 3,300 comments back from folks. So we had a really robust public engagement process that we were able to get a lot of good information from to really help drive this plan also. I mentioned earlier, sorry, Brastin, can you go back? Yeah, we, I mentioned earlier, we had a working group that was mainly made up of staff level folks that helped drive our process. We then also had a 21-member stakeholder committee, which helped drive this process. And Mr. Little and Mr. Lovering of the county planning board were on that stakeholder committee and were, played a big role in us developing these recommendations. So we greatly appreciate their participation. I talked a little bit earlier about the modes covered. We did cover all six modes with this comprehensive transportation plan. We looked at, obviously, highways and roadways, looked at rail, transit, looked at bike, pad and aviation throughout this process. So we had some really good discussions, obviously, with the public and with NC DOT on the highway modes and had some really good interaction as well with Mr. Jensen on the public transportation side of things. Had a couple of conversations with the airport to make sure that we were engaging them in the process and understanding their master plan for everything. So we tried to stay engaged with all of the modes within the county and make sure that we had a, a good plan for addressing all six modes within the county. Now that we've gotten a final plan ready, when you see the recommendations, we have over, or we have 170 miles of roadway recommendations. We have 88 miles of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And then we also have 14 intersection improvements in here. I will mention, along with the 88 miles of bike and pad facilities, and you can go to the next slide, Brastin. We are also working on the Johnston County Greenways and Trails Plan currently, which will probably add some additional miles to that, that 88. So I think when we're done with that plan, which it's due to be done in November, when we're done with that, I think we'll have some additional recommendations from the bike and pad side of things that we can kind of attach as an appendices to this plan and make sure it gets rolled in accordingly. Again, what is different with this one? We wanted to make sure it was consistent with recent planning efforts, including your recently adopted land use plan as well as other planning efforts that have been adopted within the county and within the region. We coordinated with some of our partners at DOT and with the Capital Area MPO to make sure that we understood what they had in mind for the future and that we were incorporating their planning efforts within this plan also. Again, this plan is less highway focused than the previous plan, so it's much more multimodal, especially for the unincorporated areas. Historically, you know, you've had a lot of bike, pad, transit recommendations that have been kind of concentrated in the cities and in the municipal boundaries. But we tried to also incorporate some of those modes more balanced across the county and even out into the unincorporated areas with this plan. And then last, we also did a digital map of recommendations with linked dimensional cross-sections. So you can go online, you can pull up the, the GIS map. You can see all of the recommended, recommended projects, click on those, get more information and even look at what the recommended cross-sections for the, the roadway or for the greenway may be for future planning efforts. Ordinance recommendations, and I know this is probably a big one to you all. We did draft some ordinance recommendations within the plan as they, as they deal with roadway frontage, with roadways that are recommended for improvements in the CTP, developments where a new roadway may be shown in the CTP running through parcels. And then we also addressed developments where a new greenway may be shown in the CTP running through parcels. So we do have some ordinance recommendations in the plan and how they relate to transportation and to these recommendations. And you can see some of it there, dedicate, dedicate roadway frontage consistent with recommended cross-sections. For new location roadways, there's only eight miles of, of new location roadways. But if at the end of or adjacent to a previously construction or funded for construction recommendation, it would be, the recommendation would be to build the new roadway. And then if new roadway project is not funded for construction, then it would be the request to reserve the right of way. And those basically are the same for greenways, except there's the little clause in there to dedicate right of way if not funded for construction. So again, these are some ordinance recommendations that we've made within the plan and hopefully will help set aside these, these parcels and set aside land as new recommendations and highway projects move forward in the future. And then lastly here, just to update you, we were scheduled, we, we were planning to go to the BOC last night. I think that's been pushed back now, but we are here tonight, obviously, for, to present to you all and hopefully get a recommendation for approval from you all tonight. And then we'll go back to the, the Board of Commissioners, September 2 for their public hearing and for their adoption at that time. And I think that's pretty much the gist of what I have for you tonight. If you have any questions or anything specific you'd like me to dive into more, I'd be glad to try to do that and answer any questions that you have. And again, I appreciate also the, the participation and the help from your staff. Todd and Brastin and Cameron and all the staff have been extremely helpful throughout this process and it's been a, a smooth process working with them, so we greatly appreciate their help.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I think I understand, and I may have misinterpreted. But I like the idea of maybe in future construction development sites, asking for those right of ways to be dedicated. Was that it? Yeah. Is that, am I interpreting that correct?
You are, it varies.
Because I like that because, you know, a lot of developers not gonna voluntarily put something like that in there. And if it's something that we're requesting, I really think it'd be a benefit in the long run.
Sure. You are, I think you are interpreting that right. Obviously, it varies a little bit depending on where the project is. So we've got some different recommendations based on, you know, whether or not a roadway or a recommendation is actually on roadway frontage or whether or not the recommendation actually runs through the parcels. So the recommendations do vary a little bit there, but yes, overall, you're, you're understanding it correctly. Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't have to leave?
Okay, good for you.
I was just notified.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I do have a quick question just about the terminology here. Just what the difference between reserving the right of way for roadway projects and dedicating the right of way for greenway projects?
For greenway, so specifically for greenway, you would be looking at, and let me, let me scroll down here so I can get you a little more detail on that. We actually have, in the plan itself, we actually have different scenarios for each. So like for greenways, for example, we have a scenario where the proposed development is at the terminus of a greenway recommendation. We have a scenario where the recommended greenway is in proximity to a proposed development. And then we have basically different recommendations or different strategies to address each one of those. So, and I, I guess going back to your question, they do vary between the roadway recommendations and the greenway recommendations. But with the greenway recommendations, the dedication for right of way, let me make sure I'm reading it right now. You would dedicate right of way if it's not funded for construction.
Okay.
Yeah, only if it's not funded for construction.
Okay.
That just differs from the, from roadway work. So roadway, a little bit different. But if it's roadway is not funded, you're gonna reserve the right of way as opposed to dedicate it. You're not giving up the land at that point.
Okay.
But you're just, you're just, your design is such that it will accommodate it, right? That's why how we've managed everything to this point is through looking where the developer through their design at, during, when they were developing construction drawings and, and having them reserve, quote unquote, unofficially, reserve right of way through that design, where we really didn't have the language to support it, but most, most developers are willing to do that. And that, that eliminates or alleviates some of the burden off of the taxpayer when properties condemned with right of ways taken for that roadway project. It, hopefully, we seek to lessen, number one, it does two things, but one is to lessen the burden of the, the financial burden with that taking. Number two, it also expedite that process because right of way takes a tremendous, right of way procurement takes a tremendous amount of time for roadway projects or even greenway projects as well.
Okay.
There's mud.
I think when you go through the plan and read the actual scenarios and the language attached to it, I think it'll be pretty understandable there.
Anybody have any more questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
What, what do you need a motion?
Our recommendation that goes to the.
To the county commissioners?
Yes.
Recommendation, simply recommendation to adopt.
I make a recommendation to adopt and forward to the county commissioners.
Second.
I've got a motion by Ms. Howard and a second by Ms. Sasser, Mr. Sasser.
You go first.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
This will go forth as a recommendation of adoption to the September 2 Board of Commissioners meeting, and that will be a public meeting. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.